August 25th, 2014 Board of Selectment Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to announce that we are being recorded by MCAM, Middleborough Community Cable Access Media, and broadcast on Verizon and Comcast. Okay. Unanticipated. Does anyone on the board have anything from unanticipated?
Madam Chairperson.
Yes, Mr. McKinnon.
I've recently become aware that there was a road race just recently concerning the Namasket Hill Cemetery, which is, it's one of the oldest burial grounds in the country. It was established in 1661. There's a, the intent of this road race was to gather enough money. There's no corporation that owns the cemetery. It's all run by volunteers and it's apparently people pay to be residents there, which is probably a terrible way to put it. So, but they have an area in the cemetery that they have a lot of children who died right after birth or before, and they want to put some headstones down for these children. And so they're trying to gather some money up for it, and they had a road race and they get approximately $4,000 a little under, and I don't know if that meets their goal, but it's something that they're trying to do. So, I believe they have a webpage, but I can't be certain of that. If anybody wants to contribute, or they want to become a volunteer to help out down there, send me a message and I'll get it off to the people involved. I don't have their webpages. I have trustee Joan Igledu and Carol Damon. So, send me an email on my, select, that's a big word. I was thinking, almost gave my work address, on the Selectments webpage, and I'll get it to you.
Great. Anyone else?
Yes. Just on the Gazette Facebook page, if you scroll down to the, there's an item about the road race, and it includes a name and address to send donations to.
You will be missed. You are a fountain of knowledge. Thank you for that.
What was your name, Miss?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay. Anyone else under unanticipated? How about announcements and recognitions? Anyone else on the board?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Knowlton.
I just wanted to remind everyone that I believe this Thursday will be the last in the concert series on the Town Hall. No? Mr. Givenoni, please.
Madam Chair, my name is Brian Genroy from the Middleborough Friends, and we've gone seven for seven this year. Unfortunately, the eighth is not going to happen this Thursday. We were concerned with the West Nile virus that has been located within our town. Free Town does have triple E. We haven't, that I'm aware of, had any further announcements. And with the concerts, we found that at 7:45 at this point in time, the bugs are out and they're, they started to get really heavy last week. So, we had concerns about it, so we did not want to push it that last one. So, unfortunately, we're unable to have the last concert. We did seven for seven, and we were fortunate enough to give a check to the Christmas Parade Committee, who runs the Christmas Parade or the Holiday Parade. I'll call it the Christmas Parade. The Christmas Parade, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we gave them a check for $800 this year to help offset the expenses of that event. I know the Christmas tree shop usually ponies up quite a bit as well. Anything to help out that great event. And actually, two weeks ago, we gave out the $1,000 scholarship that is raised from the Victus Sylvia Scholarship that's raised each year at the Halloween event that we have annually upstairs here in the Town Hall. And this year, it's going to be November 1st, and it's open to the public for adults. It's a great event. So, that is coming up November 1st, and tickets will go on sale sometime in September. So, everyone is invited. But I do want to thank the Selectmen on the town through you for allowing us to use the Town Hall green again this year. I think this is number eight, the eighth annual season. It was started by two musicians and Gene Spalding, I believe, were kind of instrumental, pun intended, in getting the concert series started, and it's great that we're able to keep it going. We have anywhere from 125 to 200 people a night on that one, and it's just a great time. Kids running around, I even saw a straggler of a jump rope out there that I'll take with me tonight because we have jump ropes and stuff, so it's a great event. But thank you, and then I have another announcement later.
Okay. Anything else?
Madam Chair, actually, I just wanted to remind residents, since I think this is our last meeting in August, that we voted for the last meeting and the meeting before to go gold for childhood cancer awareness from September 1st through the 30th. So, we will be lighting up the Town Hall, and if any residents want to participate in that and change their front lights to gold, I think that would be great.
Yeah, they're actually yellow, they're bug lights. Benny's has them, Joblot has them, and your front porch light, that would be, yep, for childhood cancer.
I think Ella's Lemonade, Ella and her mom are selling them at the farmer's markets too, that we have every Saturday. So, you should go and like her page on Facebook too.
That's a two, support Ella's Lemonade and support a cure for childhood cancer. Yep.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. McKinnon.
I received a letter from P.A. Lander's Company that Mass DOT Contract 82305 located on Route 28, which is East Grove, East and West Grove Street and Weyrem Street in the towns of Middleborough and Rochester are to be repaved. So, we shall have complaints of traffic.
Constructive.
But we will have a new road down there eventually.
Great.
So, that's supposed to start on September 3rd. And I don't, it didn't say they were going to do it at night, so I presume it'll be day work, which will make for more fun.
Oh, great.
And the 105 Route 495 interchange lighting arrangement and relining and re-light, repaving is all complete now, it looks, and the lights are working and directing people into their proper locations.
Amazing.
Yes. Well, it's one complete.
Great.
And that's a good thing.
Yes, it is, absolutely. Anything else? I have a couple here. The Smart 911 is setting up several dates and locations to help you fill this out. One is August 28th from 9 to 1 at the Town Hall, August 29th from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Oak Point Ballroom, September 3rd from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Town Hall, and September 9th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., it's a long day, at Oak Point Ballroom. Now, if you can't make those and you still need more information, you can go to BrewsterAmbulance.com, and you can sign up there or get more information, get some help, whatever you need. So, that's the Smart 911. If you have someone with special needs in your house, if you have pets, young children, elderly, it can save minutes sometimes, even seconds, for the 911 responders to get in there. So, it's important, and I'm insured that it is safe and no one's going to hack your information. So, I also have, the town's tourism website is up and running, which, Mr. Givenoni, we have a calendar. Call in your events, not call in, go to the website, middleboroughugh.com. And if you need more information, you can also email, it's discovermiddleboroughugh.com. You can also email discovermiddleborough@ugh@gmail.com, and we will get back to you right away. So, the calendar's up, we're still putting information in. It's by no means complete with everything that's in the town, but the first hurdle is over, and there are actually some things on the calendar, and there are quite a few listings. So, if you have a business in town too, and you want to get it on there, a restaurant, hotel, anything like that, any business, we have a full business directory. So, again, just go to the website. And to lead from that, we have the Tourism Committee is sponsoring the first annual Oktoberfest on October 18th at the KOA. It is going to have a beer garden and vendors and food, and the most, I think, the greatest thing about it is they're going to have a decorating contest. So, if you have an organization, a group, a business, somebody out there, sports teams, the groups at the high school that would like to earn a little money, we're giving cash prizes for the best cabin decorated there. So, again, you can get information. It's, I think it has to be fall themed, pumpkin themed. Go to, again, discovermiddleborough@gmail.com. Just email us and we'll send out all the information to you. You get assigned a cabin at KOA, that's your space. There is electricity available, no open flames. You'll see all the rules when you email, they'll send them to you. So, that's all, oh, and again, it's that time of year for brochures for next year. So, these are the first brochures we had this year. We're starting to gather information for them next year. Two things, if you have a great idea for an article that was not included in here, something you'd like to highlight in the town, go to discovermiddleborough@gmail.com, and you can email us there. Also, if you're a business, anywhere in town that would like to take an advertising space, we distribute more than 10,000 of these, and even businesses you wouldn't think that are not touristy businesses, I know computer businesses have received more clients through this ad. So, again, email us for some information, and that's all I have from the audience.
Madam Chair, my name is Brian Genroy. I represent the School Committee at this point. First of all, I'd like to welcome back all of our professionals at the school that came back today. Our students start arriving on Wednesday, this Wednesday before Labor Day. Our grades 1 through 12 will be arriving at the school on Wednesday and kindergarten the day later. Friday is a day off for them as well as Monday the holiday. Then on Tuesday, they'll be learning right away. None of that first week, three days stuff going on. But, that being said, our first meeting of the school year for the School Committee will be September 4th. It will be at 7 o'clock in the Tiger Nicholas Middle School auditorium. It is broadcast live, we do broadcast it live. We are, we're going to try out our new format, and in our new format does have a public comment section that there are some rules that we have to abide by because of the schools there are privacy issue items, so there are certain, there's like seven rules. We have to be very careful because we can't be specific sometimes when we relate to a specific child. The protection of the child is first. Even if a parent doesn't want to, we by law have to, but we find ourselves in front of a magistrate. So, but we're kind of excited for this new format. We will be meeting twice a month all year long, except for during the summer, we will meet once a month. But this is something that, it used to be we'd meet once, maybe twice, but now it's going to be the first and third every month, and we're hoping that our year-long calendar will be finished on a workshop that we have coming up and be posted online, which is our basic, what meeting items that we need to discuss, like handbook items. So, you'll know that the first week of May, we'll be discussing the handbook for the high school. So, if you have something you want, you can come right in. And it's not the official agenda, but it'll be the items that we're going to be discussing, whether it's IT department reports or facilities reports, they will be on that year-long agenda. So, hopefully, parents or citizens could know that we're going to be discussing it, come in, interact with us. Please come in. Our meetings, the fact this meeting is tonight, sparse, but we're hoping to get more people to come in. But, once again, it's open to the public. September 4th is our next meeting, 7 o'clock, the Tiger Nicholas Middle School. Feel free if you'd like to come in. If not, watch us on TV. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Question, Mr. Givenoni. This is the first time that school has started before Labor Day?
In Mr. Gillis's memory, yes, which probably spans back 35 years. He doesn't remember going back before. Up until this past year, we only had the ability to go back if September, if Labor Day pushed us to September 6th or 7th. Now, we have the ability to, and what's great is our staff is in right now doing professional development on Monday, Tuesday, before our students come in. So, we have two full professional development days right before school, so they're taking everything they're learning and dumping it right back into the school versus having it sometime in March, which I think is wonderful.
Will the School Committee be seeking feedback from the community, from families, businesses, school staff, and students on this change?
Oh, absolutely. I'm hoping to hear back from quite a bit. I'd like to hear yes or no, and my email is on the school website, and they can email me, and I absolutely would love to hear back one way or the other. I'm sure I'll hear some things on, or see some things on Facebook, some comments, but four comments does not make a, I'd like to have 30 or 40 good comments, constructive criticisms, things we could do differently, things that we can do better. I think that the idea of starting before was an item that was brought forth to us, and the reason why we're doing it is we're out of school till June 12th this year, by calendar. So, instead of going to the end of June, which we've typically done, when it's sweltering and nothing is getting done at that school, unfortunately, it's very difficult to teach when it's 90 degrees out there. So, we're now starting a little bit early. Of course, we're having our hottest days of the year, these next couple days, but still, we're going to be getting movement, which is the key, and we'll be out earlier.
I'd be interested to see a more formal survey.
Something that I'd like to bring up, I'm going to talk to Toby about that, we are actually starting an outreach committee. It's been formed, and our first meeting is coming up in September, so that we can talk about getting up with people and getting questions to them, whether it's the busing situation that we're going to be discussing coming up, whether combining junior and senior high school together, those types of things. We want people to give us comments.
Good. Thank you.
And I thank you for this forum, because this gets to more people than ours does. Thank you.
All eight, right? Anyone else under announcements and recognitions? Okay, let's move on. We have several minutes to approve. I would entertain a motion to approve the 5:19 regular session minutes.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Obeying? Passes unanimously. Next, the 5:19 executive session minutes. I would enter.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? No? Passes unanimously. And the 5:28 regular session minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Passes unanimously. And a motion for 8:11 regular session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. And a motion for the 8:13 regular minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Passes unanimously. And finally, for the 8:12-14 executive session minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Okay. I would entertain a motion to vote to authorize the chairman or his designated assigned warrants for the week ending 8:23-14 and 8:30-14.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Passes unanimously. On to new business. Okay, we have received a request from the Lydia Cobb Quechichen Chapter of the Massachusetts Daughter of the American Revolution to issue a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th through 23rd, 2014. The proclamation will be included in an exhibit featuring the Constitution of the United States, Daughters of the American Revolution Constitution Week posters, and proclamations issued by neighboring towns on display at the Somerset Public Library. They have enclosed a sample proclamation, and the pleasure of the board.
So moved, a motion to approve the submittal of the Constitution proclamation for 2014.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. The broker that we were going to sign the agreement with today has actually, he's gone. He's gone. He has withdrawn his proposal, and so we're moving down to the next one, and we will have his information up for us in two weeks. So, we will move on then to Item C. I would entertain a motion to approve Wright Pierce invoice for final design in the amount of $119,053.35, and to authorize the town manager to sign the invoice.
So moved, with the question?
Yes. Mr. McKinnon.
Second.
Charlie, can we get a list of payments that have been made versus the completions, projected completions that they're at? I mean, we've been signing these, seems like every other week, we're giving them about $100,000, and I'd just like to see if we're getting close to the end on that.
Well, you know, the confusing thing about this is the way they bill is they have, so this is for the final design. So, final design, they're 15% complete. The next bill was for the 50% design, for which they're 90% complete. So, it's just the way they've broken out the billing and the way they, you know, we agreed to, you know, their payment schedule. So, you know, I can certainly, you know, but this is, you know, in terms of the, yeah, I mean, some things are completely complete, so those are fully paid.
Right. I guess what I want to see is, we've said it's going to cost us X.
$2 million.
And we're sitting here with $100,000 now.
Yeah, I'll have them produce a summary to date of everything that's complete and, you know, what's partially complete, what hasn't even been done yet for the entire contract. How's that?
And then how much we've paid versus what's left.
Yep.
Because I just don't want to go.
Yep. You have the budget within the category, how much has been paid, how much remains for each category, everything totaling out to be $2 million plus of that contract.
Right.
Yeah. And just so you know, on the 15th of September, they're going to come in and give you another report on their progress with the design, as well as do the comprehensive wastewater management plan, public hearing, the second one in that project. And that'll be the time where we also talk about the Warren article that asked to go to town meeting this fall to authorize the entire project. So, you know, in two meetings from now, you'll get a full report, but before that, I'll get you a written report.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next. I would entertain a motion to approve Wright Pierce invoice for design upgrade PH 50% in the amount of $62,651.40, and to authorize the town manager to sign the invoice.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, this is the, you know, getting to the 50% design, and they're 90% complete on that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And again, I would entertain a motion to approve Wright Pierce invoice for CWMP in the amount of $14,700, and to authorize the town manager to sign the invoice.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
And this project is about 50% completed, just a little under.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Now, I would entertain a motion to sign a memorandum of agreement with the library union for fiscal year 2015. Let's get the motion first, and then we'll discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Charlie, do you think?
This is the fifth contract that we've completed this year. As you know, you've been doing one-year agreements, and this is a one-year agreement under the same terms as all the other unions that we've settled with, 2%. Virtually no other changes, primarily in this contract, we took the opportunity to update some of the language and move some things around and put them in better places in the contract. So, actually, this is not just a memorandum of agreement, we're actually voting to sign the conformed contract.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. Now, we are going to appoint the members of the Town Manager Screening Committee. Everyone submitted your choices, and actually, we were in total agreement on eight out of nine candidates. We received, I believe, 12 or 13 letters of interest. And the eighth, the ninth candidate, actually, four of us had recommended. So, I gave you all of that information, and taking that into consideration, the members would be Rosalie Weiss as the superintendent of schools, Daniele Baucher as a department head, Steve McKinnon as selectman, Leilani Delpi as selectman, Steve Morris, Lincoln Andrews, Neil Rosenthal, Bruce Atwood, and Rich Young. Anyone want to discuss this before we vote on it?
Mr. Chair. Can I just say that I want to thank everyone who sent in letters, even if you didn't get picked. The town just can't do its business unless people are willing to step up and volunteer on these kinds of committees. Unfortunately, we didn't have room for everyone. When a committee gets too large, it kind of defeats the purpose. But I just really want to thank everyone who took the time and put their name in.
Madam Chair, I also would like to remind everyone else who applied that didn't get chosen that all of the meetings are public, and I would highly recommend that you attend all of the meetings if you want your.
Timeout.
Sorry.
No. The Screening Committee meets in executive session because the candidates' names are confidential until they nominate finalists to the board, so.
Just kidding, then. Don't go to the meetings, because you won't be let in.
No. And that's a very necessary aspect of the process, because some candidates frankly don't want to, you know, have their names get out in public unless it is clear that they're one of the finalists. You know, it makes it difficult for them to, you know, remain where they are if they're also, you know, looking for another job, so.
So, once we have finalists, you're welcome to attend.
Your interviews will be obviously in public session, but the Screening Committee does their interviews confidentially.
Okay. It would, I would also, I was like, did I have something?
So, I would recommend that you get your interest out for any other committees that you might be interested in. I think the Board of Selectmen put a lot of emphasis on people who already were involved in committees and had shown that they were, you know, committed to helping out on all the town committees.
And had gone through this process in the past, because we need to expedite it. On top of that, it was the general consensus, we were going to try to recommend a chairman tonight, but I think that will happen with the actual committee in the very first meeting. That was what everyone wanted, so that's where we are. So, I would entertain a motion to appoint the list that I just mentioned.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimously. Jackie, can you contact everyone? Thank you. And I guess then we will set up, find out what their availability is when they want to set up their meetings. Okay, thank you. All right. Right on time.
And my understanding, based on our calendar, is that the committee will be meeting with you at your next meeting on the 8th.
So, we'll have to meet before.
To discuss what you're looking for in a town manager and what you want the committee to do.
Okay. So, if we could meet before that, that would be great. Before the 8th with the committee? You're saying, or after?
You'll meet with the committee on the 8th.
Okay, so they, then, we really don't have to meet till after the 8th?
Right.
I don't think the committee has to meet until after the 8th, right.
After the 8th. Okay.
Mr. Chair. Just a question to Charlie. Are we still on track to have, after this committee comes up with their recommendations, to then have an assessment center on those candidates, or not?
You know, I think that's something for you, you know, to discuss whether or not you want to do that. You know, it's entirely up to you whether that's something you want to add to the process.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussions on this? No? Okay, so we are right pretty much on time for Parker Elmore of Odyssey Advisors for our GSB 45 actual valuation and proposed OPEC funding schedule.
Thanks for having me. I know we've given out, I know we've given out a copy of, preview of a package. Did everybody get a copy of this?
Sir, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure. Parker Elmore, President and CEO of Odyssey Advisors, and also the actuary for the other post-employment medical benefits for the town. We do the GSB 45 evaluations for the town. So, yeah, I just wanted to kind of take a couple of minutes, and I know we produce a report every two years, and it gets filed like most of these reports do, and handed to your auditors, and it does what it does. But we're going to kind of explain, you know, kind of what this all is, what it all means, where you go from here, and all that good stuff, so. Put together kind of a quick package for you, kind of an overview of all the key elements. You know, basically, first off, you know, what is GSB and why does all this stuff matter? And obviously, many of you people already know it, but it's the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They issued this statement in about 2006. Basically, moved you guys away from a pay-as-you-go methodology for your other post-employment benefits to now work on a accrual basis, so that people earn the, you expense those benefits as they're earned over time, rather than when the people actually receive them. So, then the question is, well, why would they do something like this? Well, they did it for corporate America on the financial accounting standards board side back in 1991, 1992. And the concept here is to allow better comparability of financial statements. So, Town X has 500 retirees, Town Y has 30 retirees. They may bear all the same liability, but on a pay-as-you-go, basically, very different. So, one is already hit their maturity point and coming down, and the other one is still on an up slope. So, it's a way to get a better understanding of what the future holds for both towns in terms of what their cash flow requirements are going to be. You know, you folks offer medical and life insurance benefits to your retirees. Dental is 100% employee-paid or retiree-paid, so it's really not relevant to this situation. In reality, life insurance is so small as to not really be relevant. So, it's really a medical issue is what it comes down to. You know, you guys had very good news. You guys have done a very good job managing the liabilities. You guys changed your medical plan for those over age 65 in a Medicare integrated plan, as opposed to those premiums going up by about 13% over the two-year period, actually went down by 27%. So, like, significant, huge changes in your liability. You know, you were about $109 million two years ago, now you're down to $79 million. Definitely in the right direction, definitely a good step, very good as anybody would look at that. Your cash out-of-the-air costs, this retirees only, mind you, not your actives, about 4.74 million, down to 3.83 million. Again, big savings. So, you guys have seen a lot of benefits. And the reason why you saw such a big benefit is, for your retirees, 76% of the total liability is generated after age 65. So, you can sit here all day long and say, well, we changed the HMO from $20 to $25 copay, or whatever it may happen to be. That has a lot of benefit for your active employees, does absolutely nothing for your, almost nothing for your retirees. Ultimately, the post-65 benefits is where the money is, that's where you have to go if you want to actually get savings, and that's what you guys did, and have done a very good job for that. Medical care costs over the last few years have been flat. Now, some people will tell you it's healthcare reform, some people will tell you it's drugs coming off patent, some people will tell you it's recession. Everyone has a million different excuses why, you know, medical care costs are flat. I will tell you honestly, I don't know why. And I would tell you that because in the early 90s, we saw a very similar phenomenon. And then we saw several years of 15%, 18% increases that followed. So, my point to that being is, I wouldn't get in a great mood about, oh, we can just start expanding all kinds of benefits now for saving all this money on medical. You know, we take it, we say thank you, but I wouldn't necessarily say we bent the cost curve forever. I mean, let's hope so, but I wouldn't get too crazy about that quite yet. You folks currently, for retirees and their beneficiaries, about 585 people currently receiving benefits under the plan. Over the next 15 years or so, we have to go up to almost 700 people, and then it will start to come back down a little bit. So, your retired population is nearing its peak, let's put it that way. You're currently paying about, you know, again, $2.93 million in costs. Right now, it's going to go up to about 9.71 over the next 40 years, but in today's dollars, it's going to be basically the same, it's going to be pretty flat. One of the key elements here is, should we pre-fund these benefits? Should we start setting money aside? Can we have an $80 million liability? Eh, $80 million, we can handle the pay-as-you-go costs, let's just deal with it. And that's the approach, I will tell you, probably in this state, 90% to 95% of towns and entities. Most of that, honestly, is because they don't have the money. I mean, let's be perfectly honest about it. If they had the money, funding is a great idea. Certain towns we work with have funded. Mattafoysit, which is not too far from here, they adopted a 30-year funding schedule, got a nice ratings increase as part of that. I'm not going to say it's solely due to that, but that was part of the reason why they got a ratings increase. We work with other towns, kind of Ipswich north of Boston, who has adopted more of a partial normal cost funding methodology. We have other towns who are doing, you know, more modest funding methods, others who do free cash flow when it arises. So, there's a lot of different pathways. No, one of them is the right pathway, the right pathway is the one that works for you. And I say that in a sense of going, what is one that you can legitimately do? And I say that because it's easy to sit here and say, well, adopt the funding schedule, life is great. And then two years from now, you go, yeah, we can't afford that funding schedule, we have to undo it. So, think about a funding schedule that you could legitimately do for four, five, six years. Yes, it may be a 30-year funding schedule, but be confident that you can at least handle it for the near term. We all recognize the world changes, recessions come, recessions go, budgets change, why don't you move into town, why don't you move out of town, who knows? My point being, the budget, the funding schedule can change, so you don't lock yourself into 30 years, you're locked into the next, or a selectman decides what they want to change. With that said, if you go to SEP, Fitch, Moody's, whatever, and present, we got this great new funding schedule, we're really addressing the issue, we'd like to get a ratings upgrade, and then a year and a half later, you're saying, eh, forget about that funding schedule, we're not going to do it. I don't know that it's going to be positively received by the rating agency community, so I would, you know, like I said, if you commit to four or five years, I think you're in pretty good shape. Now, we came up with a couple of different funding schedules, I think we had eight in total, but I mean, two that I think we're really looking at here. One is you guys can put about $860,000 a year on a flat basis for the next 30 years. If you did that, assuming all actuarial assumptions are realized, and you're in 7% a year on the money, neither one of which are guaranteed to happen by any means, but let's assume those happen, your plan would be fully funded after 30 years, and you wouldn't have to keep putting money in anymore. That's one method. Another method, as you guys are aware, if you guys are funding your pension obligation right now for about another 20 years, at the end of 20 years, your contributions required for that are going to reduce significantly. So, the approach we took was, we put $191,000 a year for the next 20 years effectively, and basically backloaded by saying, when the pension obligation is paid for, take those funds and push those over to the retiree medical side. So, we basically have a path going up, and then a big bump, and then keep going forward, we would then also get funded over a 30-year period. So, it's more of a back-end loaded product, I make no bones about that. But again, it's a way to kind of level out the funding for the town, in the sense of going, you have, you have OPEG funding today and pension funding today, and then 20 years from now, they would flip, and the OPEG funding would go up and the pension funding would come down. So, on an overall basis, the town would stay on a more of a level glide path, rather than trying to really push it all to today, and having a big, you know, savings 20 years from now. You know, one of the other issues I always talk to people about, we're doing funding, we do a lot of these meetings, as you might imagine, with OPEG being a very popular topic, is what are their bonding needs as a town have? What are their capital needs as a town have? It's easy for people like me, who don't have to deal with it, say, hey, throw in $860,000 a year, that's great. But I don't know, do you have new school coming in, do a fire department? Are you looking to be borrowing $100 million for something whereby, you know, putting in a funding schedule and getting better ratings, a rating on your bonds, might save you 20, 30, 40 basis points on your bonds? Then that can pay off the cost of the funding very quickly, if you're actually going to be doing some kind of bonding. So, you have to keep that in mind. One of the other things is, you guys have some funding today, but in reality, that's really off in the gas and electric department. I mean, they have pretty much all of the funding that's in your plan now, it's about $4.4 million. They've done a good job of funding, and they get that from their ratepayers, and that's all fine, but really, the rest of the town, to date, has not really, you know, contributed significantly to this plan, which is fine. But again, you're hardly alone, you have plenty of company in that regard. One of the other elements is, if you set up a trust fund to fund this thing, it's irrevocable. A lot of people use stabilization reserves, and that's fine, but technically, that doesn't count as an asset for these purposes. So, an OPEG trust would count as an asset, that allows us to use that higher interest rate, say a 7% versus the 4% we're using today. But it's irrevocable, and you say, well, gee, it's irrevocable, why would I want to do something like that? I put this money and I can't get it out. You can always get the money out to pay these benefits. So, you guys are, you know, paying, you know, $3 million and change or whatever for these benefits every year. So, if you get, you know, you get $4, $5, $6 million in a trust, and you decide, this isn't for us, it's stupid, we don't want to do this anymore, then just start tapping the trust for $3 million a year, and within two or three years, you've exhausted the trust, and you move on your merry way. I'm not saying you should do that, but my point is, at least in the early years, you have a pretty easy escape path if you decide, this wasn't what you wanted to do, if you decided it was a mistake, we shouldn't have done this, there are ways out. Again, stabilization reserves are great, you have a lot more flexibility, but they're not a GSB 45 asset. Technically, that means you don't get to use this as an asset for the fund, which therefore means you don't get to use a higher discount rate, and the higher discount rate allows you to book a much lower liability on your books. And then the other part of this is, as you folks may or may not be aware, GSB 68 and 67, which recently came out of the pension side and changes how you're reflecting your pension obligations, we're going through the exact same thing right now with the retiree medical side. That will be effective, it's in the exposure draft right now, it's comment period, but it'll be effective for fiscal '18. And what that's going to do is take, all these things right now reside in the notes section of your financial statement. So, you have, you know, $80 million sitting in the notes section, that's going to move to your balance sheet come 2018. Which, again, don't get me wrong, anybody who's looking to buy your bonds can flip to the notes section and see the $80 million. I don't think you're really tricking anybody by having it there instead of the balance sheet, but nonetheless, it's moving there. But the other element of this is, the discount rate we use to value your liability, if you're not funded based on a 20-year municipal bond index, so right now, about 3.4%, compared to your 4%, that would increase your numbers from, say, $80 million to probably about $95 million. On the other hand, if you're funding to invest the money, then we base it on whatever your investment policy is, that would get us, again, closer to a 7% kind of a number, depending on how you invest the money. If you tell me, we're going to put it all in T-bills, then yeah, I don't get to use 7%. Or if you can invest it in a broad-based portfolio, and something like 7%, and that $80 million number comes down to probably around a $50 million number. So, it's a much, you know, better number looking on your balance sheet, which again, makes investors happier, more likely to buy your bonds, and, you know, as I was at one of these presentations a couple of weeks ago, and as I try and explain to people, is, there is a certain circularity in it, in the sense that, the more money you can afford to fund, the less money you have to fund, because I get to use a higher interest rate. So, again, if you're not funding, I'm going to use 3.45% or thereabouts, and I'll say you have a $90 million, $95 million shortfall. If you're going to fund, you get to use 7%, I say, a $55 million shortfall. So, you have a much less target to get to, so there are definite incentives to fund, but again, ultimately, those choices are up to you to make. We did create for you folks, just a comparative exhibit, kind of how you compare against your peers here in the area, here in Plymouth County. You know, your guys, normal cost of the benefits being accrued each year by your active employees, so about $2.8 million are new benefits being accrued each year. So, for benefit-eligible active employees, about $5,500 a year. Now, that's slightly above the Plymouth County average, however, a couple of numbers in Plymouth County that we work with anyway, really skew the number downward. I mean, North River Collaborative does not have a rich plan by any means, so they have a very low normal cost. If you compare yourself to the town of Rockland, you compare very favorably, town of Bridgewater very favorably, you're a little higher than Marion and Mattafoysit, but again, you're in the right area, you're not off the charts in either direction, so you compare pretty favorably to your peer group. If we go across and we see the average benefit payments in what, per covered retiree, you're paying about $7,400 out per year, per covered retiree slash beneficiary. Well, again, Rockland's like $8,800, Marion's about $4,400, Old Colony is off the charts, but Bridgewater's about $9,000 and change. So, again, you compare very favorably. So, my point here being is, compared to your peers, you're basically right in the middle, you're not way off on either direction. So, you know, for people who would say, you guys are either, you know, not giving your retirees anything, or you're giving them the store, I'd say you're pretty much right in line with your peer group. So, again, we talked about the funding alternatives on the next page of the exhibit there, which, again, we had $860,000 exhibit, or $191,000 going up to about $4.7 million in 2034. Both of them effectively get you to fully funded by 2044. So, again, it's which path you like. Again, as I mentioned earlier, to try and levelize the burden on the town, I think probably the 191, or, you know, some amount more in that area makes more sense than the 860 number. So, because the 860 number is putting a big burden on the town today, to get a windfall 20 years from now, I'm not sure that necessarily makes sense, but again, it's, your guys know the budget better than I do, and what the future holds for the town, what the future holds for the budget, but I would think that probably makes a little more sense for where you're going. And then we, we did one on the next page, we just said, if you went the $191,000 approach, how's that hit each of the various entities? So, you have $44,000 for general government, $116,000 for the schools, $20,000 for public safety, you know, $5,000 for water, and so on. We didn't charge anything to gas and electric, for the simple reason of, they're basically fully funded, there's no real reason for them to be kicking in above and beyond what they've already done, to basically fund the rest of the town, at least that was the thought process behind it. And then honestly, the next couple of things are really just graphs, just to show graphically again, that, you know, like we kind of showed is, yeah, you have the big spike here in 2034, when the contributions go up, and the page after it, so it just shows the asset accumulation, that you basically get to the same place after 30 years. One is more level, and one is a much greater backlog, but you get to basically the same place at the end of 30 years, which again, is full funding of the plan. So, it really just depends on how much money you're looking to set aside, if any. You know, I guess first question is, do you wish to fund or don't you wish to fund? If you do, which pathway would you like to take? More of a level approach on the retiree medical side, or more of a level approach with the pension and retiree medical combined? So, you know, there's two ways to look at that. You know, and again, you know, I'm not going to argue that you should or shouldn't fund, that's not really my place to say, or I'll tell you, the advantages of funding are that it gives you a certain cushion for the future, in the sense of going, again, I don't know what the future's going to hold, you know, recessions come and go, whatever. And also, the other side of this is that your employee groups, they look at this number, they see $80 million, and they go, okay, that's fine today, but where are they going to come up with this money in 20 years, five years, 10 years, whatever the number may happen to be? Sure, they can make, meet the bill today, can they meet it in the future? If you're setting money aside, provides a certain level of benefit security for them, the promise will actually be upheld. I mean, it's nice to say that we've never, you know, not made our benefit promises whole, that's true. But I, as a 40-year-old worker, let's say, who's going to be retiring in 2032, and then maybe spend the next 40 years thereafter trying to get benefits, I feel a lot more secure about getting those benefits if it's actually a pot of money sitting there, rather than a promise to pay by some future town council or some future municipal government. Now, the one cautionary tale of all this is, these numbers are volatile, they change. You know, again, we had a couple of years of very flat premiums, even down premiums on the Medicare premium side, that was great. Two years from now, we can come back here and say, listen, your premiums have gone up by 18% a year for two years. You know, there's no way for me to know that. The healthcare environment, as you know, is an uncertain one, and there's a lot of change going on, and change that will continue to happen. The state has put out various retirement reform proposals, some of those passed back, affected April of 2012, others have been nicely set shelves for a period of time, probably held in committee or wherever you want, whatever nice language you want to put, but they've been not moving far over the last 18 months. So, things will change, that's probably the only certainty of this, but my point is, this is not meant to be a set it and forget it, this is meant to be a continuing pathway. So, you start out, you make changes, you see where they go, two, five years later, you make more changes, you could expand the benefits, you could reduce the benefits, you could change the funding. This is constantly meant to be attacking against a target, we're not going to just set this thing and walk away for the next 30 years and hope it all works out. No, I mean, we do these evaluations every two years, and we provide you a report, and obviously, we work with your auditors, and if you're funding, we're going to work with the investment folks as well, to make sure that, you know, the promises are actually kept, and the money is there to do so. So that's, you know, the short version of a, you know, forty-page report, but certainly happy to answer questions, or, you know, talk about pros and cons of funding, and schedules, and why and why not, and all that fun stuff.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Hi. Thank you for doing this. I'm glad I got that explanation, because I certainly wouldn't want to be sitting here in 2031 or '22 when somebody says, oh, now we have to put two point nine million dollars away. That would be exciting, make for a wonderful conversation night, but I still don't understand, why, why, why does that money become available? Do I, am I not going to fund pensions after that time?
Your, have your pension fund will basically be fully caught up, fully funded by 2034? At that point, you're only going to have to fund basically the normal cost at that point? So you're, right now, you're funding both the ongoing cost of the pension plan, plus you're funding the shortfall. In 2034, the shortfall theoretically is gone, so at that point, you're only funding the current costs. So that shortfall payment that you'll be making from now through 2034, that shortfall payment then becomes available to pay these other benefits. Now, you know, we should all note, I think the shortfall is going to be paid off in 2028, and then 2034, and, you know, we'll see what happens in the future. It's generally, you know, we have a stock market correction, or whatever words you want to use, and we extend the term, to believe that between now and 2034, we will not have any kind of a decline in the stock market. As one who's saving for retirement, I would like to think that's the case, but I also don't necessarily stay, believe in that.
Plymouth County retirement just hit us with a sizable increase last year. We reduced it down a little bit this year, but it was, and they wanted to keep it going. They wanted to just, you know, we're going to, we're going to keep this huge number, and it was like, well, guys, that's all. All the money that they were looking for was more than what our increase is in the course of a one year.
Yeah.
So all of the increase of any income that we had to the town was going to go just to that.
Yeah.
So there'd be nothing left for costs that increase as they go along, as they goes each year. Now, my question, a question I have, you mentioned a trust fund.
Yeah.
Which we don't, we don't have a, we do have a trust fund.
We do, we authorized it, what, three years ago?
Okay.
And we've appropriated, you know, twice to it, two hundred thousand the last two years, and we're going to do another two hundred thousand this fall.
So, so we're actually ahead of the curve?
Well, we, you know, we've done, as Parker suggested, we've done some, many have done nothing, at least we've done some, you know, so far.
Which I think certainly helped us get in, getting that bond rating increase.
I, I think so, I think, you know, it's, yeah, it's a piece. I mean, again, we're, you know, we're ahead of the curve.
So, I guess my concern is, all the unknowns out there, I mean, we're talking seven percent, trying to get a seven percent dividend is very difficult, unless you're taking a lot of risk.
I wouldn't say a lot of risk, I mean, as we don't manage money, that's not our job, but I wouldn't say a lot of risk, I would say, if you have a balanced portfolio, seven percent is a fairly reasonable long-term rate of return assumption. I would tell you, a lot of people would argue for higher, I don't happen to buy that, but I mean, the state is arguing, I think, for eight and a quarter, or something like that. I think that's excessive, but I think seven percent, you know, a balanced sixty-forty-type of a portfolio is certainly not outside the realm of reasonable.
Is that reasonable?
Currently, we're looking at the state credit fund.
Judy.
Currently, we were going to, after we get through this bond issue, actually started, I've contacted the state credit fund to look into investing with them and put the town's funds in there. Currently, we just have it in a money market account. So we are looking at that, and we're looking at some other investment agencies, probably in the beginning of September, I've started setting up some appointments with myself, the town manager, we're going to ask the GME, Jackie Crowell to attend, to talk to different investment agencies. So at this time, I'm not sure exactly, you know, what the rate of return will be, but I believe it's reasonable.
You think seven percent is reasonable right now?
Yes, if they balance it correctly, but again, we don't want to take too much risk, so.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else here?
So, in my memo, I recommend that we do the funding schedule, which is backloaded, starts at, you know, basically, it's flat at a hundred ninety-one thousand until, you know, until our next analysis and whether or not we have to adjust that. I think it would be beneficial, we are planning a bond issue this fall, so, you know, I don't know if you're comfortable taking a vote on that tonight, if you'd like to think about it, and come back in a couple of weeks and decide then. You know, that amount is what we've been able to put aside the last two years, actually, you know, and this year again, you know, so for the third year. So it seems to be to be not an insubstantial amount, but not an amount that's going to hurt us.
You're talking two hundred thousand?
Yeah, roughly two hundred thousand dollars.
So he's talking a hundred and sixty-one thousand?
A hundred ninety-one.
Hundred ninety-one.
Yeah, I rounded it up to two hundred, but, you know, we would do a hundred ninety-one and keep the funding.
I'd rather do two hundred. If we can do two hundred, I'd rather keep doing the two hundred.
We could do that.
You know, I'd rather be above what the schedule is, and I feel much more comfortable knowing that if we can, if we build up a lot of money in that trust account, if things go bad, and we have a year where we can't make the payment, or whatever payments we have to make, we can withdraw from that to make the payments. So, giving us that nest egg would make me feel a lot more comfortable, and of course, knowing that there's a, there's a swap of money in that, because I certainly wouldn't want to have some poor selectmen sit up here, having to come up with two hundred, two million dollars like that, that would be tough in a year, but knowing that they can make that swap.
Yeah, and as Parker said, you know, right now, that's the payoff date, it can move out, it might even move, you know, who knows? If, you know, things continue to be good, it could, it could get shortened up.
Because, I think one thing that people should know is, who sets that, this 2034? Who's, who's the magical wizard that set 2034?
Commerce, Life Select, and Plymouth County Retirement.
Well, it's Plymouth County Retirement, you know, they're the ones who...
But they set a date, but why did they set 2034? Why not 2054?
Well, because the state doesn't allow you to go beyond, at this point, 2040.
So the state set 2034?
No, state sets 2040.
2040.
And Plymouth County went to 2034, actually at our recommendation, because otherwise, the annual appropriation this year would have been, as you said, unaffordable.
Right.
Weren't they 2030 initially?
Well, we were at 2028, then it went up to 2029, went up to 2030, and now it's gone up to 2034, all during this recession, all during this last six-year period where things have been very, you know, very tough.
I'm saying, you're not alone, everybody else, you know, every other town we work with is doing the same kind of a thing, but they've been pushing that back. And the question is, that's why I said before, is, will it stay at 2034? You know, I have no idea, you know, but that's the current plan. But again, I mean, you know, to forecast twenty years out, you know, we're doing it, obviously, but I, you know, it's like anything, my forecast for next year, I feel very comfortable with, two years out, pretty comfortable with, twenty years out, not going to say I'm real comfortable, but I can tell you the exact things that are going to happen twenty years from now.
And, and the whole thing too is, this, because, because it's an arbitrary date, it can be changed.
Yeah.
And if need be changed, it can be changed.
But the thing of it is, I would say, it's much like social security or any of these programs, you can make small changes today to affect large changes later, the longer you wait to make changes, the bigger the changes are that are required. So, again, to, coming right, if you're setting aside one-ninety-one or two hundred thousand today, or two and a quarter, pick a number, you don't have to do a lot today, it's much like the person who saves, starts saving for retirement at twenty-five, the person who waits till they're fifty-five to start, when you start at twenty-five is a much easier path to get there.
And to follow it, Selectman McKinnon was saying, just to clarify, if we commit to a schedule, we don't have to stay committed to that schedule, we can change it if circumstances change?
Yeah, well, you absolutely change, I mean, this is not a legally binding contract that you signed up for, it says, I will do the next, this for the next thirty years. It's a commitment by the board to say, this is our forecasted contribution schedule for the next thirty years. Now, as I said, ideally, you're going to be able to keep doing it for four to five years, because it's tough to go to the rating agencies and say, we put this in, and then we just immediately abandon it. With that said, they also recognize that life changes. Five years from now, the assets could have overperformed or underperformed, medical care costs went up or down, so, you know, the revenues in the town went up or down. So, I don't recommend changing the funding schedule every two years when we come back, but I'd say, we have a couple of other towns, I'd say every four to six years is a good time to come back and revisit, and say, okay, where do we stand versus the forecast? We're ahead or above, maybe the one-ninety-one goes to, you know, two oh five, or it goes down to one seventy-five after five years, you know, there's no way to know that right now. But it should be, again, it's an evolving document, you know, tacking toward the end goal.
Mr. Chair.
Charlie, I, I agree with your option. I'm not wild about the backloading, but we obviously can't afford to do anything else. If we do nothing, then we put our credit rating at risk, and this is something that we can revisit in a few years, so it seems to make sense. I'm comfortable in voting for this tonight.
Okay, does everybody have any information they need?
Madam Chair, is there any cost savings as to doing, you know, the flat year plan as opposed to the balloon payment plan?
Your cost savings, I guess I would say, are this, when you're dealing with the trustees, be they Prit or a couple of the other firms out there, there are asset-based charges. I mean, you know, trustees and investment managers don't work for free, and so they aren't going to charge you money, the more money you have in, the lower the expenses are going to be as a percentage of assets. So if you're funding more quickly, you'll get those asset-based expenses down more quickly. With that said, you know, we're talking about, you know, basically, say, four tenths of a percent versus six tenths of a percent, you know, when you're saying, well, gee, we can save, you know, two tenths of a percent, well, you got to come up with an extra five-hundred thousand dollars a year or so to do it, and you don't have the money, you know, it's like a lot of things, there's a lot of things I can wish for, but in reality, I can only afford what I can afford. So I mean, I guess the point, I guess I would say, is, in the years where your schedule is one-ninety-one or two hundred, or whatever schedule it is you adopt, to the extent you have years where you have sufficient free cash flow, and it's not needed for stabilization reserve, if you throw an extra twenty-five, or an extra fifty, or whatever it may happen to be, the more money you get in sooner, the less you have to put in later, going to the backloading comment, you know, that would certainly be ideal. But again, I will say that as, you know, full disclosure, in our business, our business is based on benefit security, so we are always going to recommend more funding than less, and we're always going to recommend things to make the benefits more secure than less. So I tell you that as a broad framework, on top of things we recommend, but no, I don't think there's any huge benefits, you know, you're going to get a few savings on the asset side, but not that they're going to be terribly material.
It's more important to have a plan than not have a plan, it doesn't necessarily, you know, give us a lot more, depending on what the plan is.
No, that's exactly the thing, I should have said that earlier, that, we talk to people all the time, and we have lots of people throwing free cash, twenty-five here, fifty here, a hundred here, and as I was trying to explain to folks, is, but the rating agencies want to see more than anything else is a plan. You know, because a lot of folks, I want to say, four or five years ago, got it in their head that, we just need to set up a trust, and that's going to make the rating agencies happy, and I have clients who set up a trust, and they put in a thousand bucks, and they're, you got a twenty million dollar liability, and they set up a thousand bucks, that's going to make them happy? You know, I said, if anything, I would downgrade you on that alone.
Yes.
You know, because you can't even claim ignorance anymore.
For stupidity.
Yeah, you can't claim ignorance, you saw the problem, this is what you did. So, so again, I mean, what they want to see is a plan, again, are they going to be allowed with backloading now? I mean, they, they would love to see it front-loaded, just like anybody else, but, you know, again, it's a plan to show you saw a problem, you came up with a solution, you can talk about the pension funding expired in 2034, here's what you're doing with it, so it shows that, you know, again, you have a plan here, it's not just something you picked off, you know, the carpet, there was actually thought that went into it, and a plan that went into place.
And, I mean, Charlie, so these numbers fit right into our budgets, it should not tax us, it's pretty even?
Yeah, I mean, we've been carrying this number in our forecast now for the last year. I've built it in, you know, it's built into the next year in the forecast, so I think it's a doable number, you know, that's why I'm recommending it. And perhaps what we do is, if you'd adopt this schedule as we presented, we'll just fund it at two hundred, we'll keep it in the forecast as two hundred, and that's, so we'll fund a little bit better than the schedule, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
So, we're, yes, exactly.
So, most would adopt their funding schedules proposed?
So, most.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
No, no, no other discussion. It's got to be me.
Thanks.
It had to be me.
Yeah, I know, I said it was going to happen. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries unanimously, so we'll continue with the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, and now, we have the review from the Beta Group Pavement Management Report. And I think they're going to set up a PowerPoint for us?
That's right, okay, good.
Excuse me.
Thank you. Fifty more of these, and we can do the roads with these.
Really?
Fill some potholes anyway.
Oh, boy.
All right. Really?
Fill some potholes anyway.
All right. 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 All right.
They spent the spring of this year going over all the public accepted roads. It's about 160 miles of roadway that essentially they walked or drove very slowly. And they have essentially surveys where they come up with grades on each road. That goes into a computer system and spits out the report you guys have in front of you. What we use that for is to determine what roads, uh, need to be, what order to do the roads in, which are the most important. There's a couple of different ways of looking at that, as you'll see through the report. And Conrad's ready, we'll let him get going.
How you doing? Uh, thanks for the opportunity to have me come in again tonight. I think we met in, uh, late fall last year, went through, uh, kind of what pavement management was and what we were gonna do here in town. So, the first part of the, uh, the presentation is kind of just a brief overview. So, I think most of you have seen that, so we're just gonna briefly go through it again. And then we'll get into the existing conditions information that we collected here in town. So first off, what is pavement management? It's the practice of planning for pavement maintenance and rehabilitation with the goal of maximizing the value and life of a pavement network. So, in order to do that, you really need to know what is out on the roadways. So, what we did was, as Chris said, we conducted an inspection of each individual roadway, driving each roadway and picking up surface distresses. Uh, and the idea of the program is to catch the roadways before they fall too, too far down, uh, the deterioration curve. And we catch them at the right repair at the right time. So, this is the pavement deterioration curve. And on the left-hand side you can see is, uh, the condition of the roadway. And on the, on the bottom is the years of the, the roadway's existence. So, you can see at the, at the beginning of its lifespan, it doesn't deteriorate very quickly. So it stays in pretty good shape. And the idea of the program and the right repair at the right time is to catch the roadway and do preventative maintenance at the top of the curve so that you don't have to spend lots of money down at the bottom of the curve. Because it's more effective to keep good roads in good conditions than it is to repair roadways that are in tough shape. Uh, so how, how do we, how do we preserve the roadways? These are just some of the categories of, uh, that you treat the roadway with. You have your maintenance category, which is your crack seals and your pothole patching. Obviously, we saw a lot of that this winter. Then you have your surface treatments where, which are complete thin overlays. Your micro-surfacing and your hot-in-place, which are a little bit more expensive than your maintenance categories. Uh, and then you have your structural repair, which is your mill and overlay, your reclamation reconstruction. And that's really where you start spending a lot of money on the roadway. Your square yardage costs come way out. So now to the scope of the project that we performed. Just gonna, I'm gonna touch on all these, so I'm gonna skip this slide. So the first part, uh, was a roadway inventory in GI, and we linked that all up to GIS. So you could see that circled area up there, that's what we did the inspections on. So it was the town-accepted roadways, 163.72 miles. Uh, you can see underneath that in the small font, Chapter 90 roadway acceptance was 155.81 miles. So, what we did was, at the beginning of the project, Chris and his staff went through all the roadway acceptance information that the town had on file. And that's really a key component of the project, because you can see the huge discrepancy between the two. It's 8.1 miles it came out to be. So that, after we filed the paperwork and mass DOT, will turn into money for the town that they're gonna get every year. So, 8.1 miles, it's approximately $5,000 a mile. So you're looking at approximately $40,000 a year that the town could gain in Chapter 90 funding, just based off of the inventory reveal. So what type of system will the town have in place after the project is complete? It's a, uh, non-prop, non-proprietary system, so that means you don't pay for the software cost itself. It's based on Microsoft Access. It's located on many computers. It's probably on that one, it's on mine. Pretty much a software that's pretty common with most computers. Um, and then it's linked into GIS. There's free versions that we download if the town doesn't have it, but I believe the town does have GIS. So, you're really not paying for any software that went along with the project. So what did we do when we were out inspecting the roadways? So on this left-hand side here, the circled area, you can see all the distress information that we were picking up. Picked up edge cracking, alligator cracking, linear cracking, potholes, patching, rutting, and depressions. So that's all the information that when the inspectors were driving down the roadway, that's what they were looking for. That, picking up that distress information will then put each individual segment of roadway into, uh, it'll, it'll give it a 0 to 100 score, basically. Other information that we collected while we were out there was curb data, whether or not the roadway had curb on either side. Uh, the average reveal of that curb, which is very, it's very important when you're going to pick your surface, uh, treatments later on, because if you don't have enough, um, curb reveal, you can't do overlays, you'd have to mill an overlay. Um, other information that we picked up as well is sidewalk information. We didn't rate the sidewalks on a scale of 1 to 1, uh, 0 to 100. That's a separate component of a project if the town so chooses to do so. Uh, we picked up the striping, the striping information as well, and then the functional classification of the roadway. The ADTs and things of that nature were all coded into each, uh, segment of the roadway. Uh, average daily travel? So, how many, how many cars are on that roadway each day? So, what we, what we want to do at that point is, the whole goal of the program is to get each roadway, based on its rating, into a repair band. So you can see at the top of the, the banding there, defer maintenance. So that's not gonna cost you any money because the road's in good shape. As you go down this, uh, this diagram on the right, your routine maintenance, we assign, uh, a, a cost for that routine maintenance. So that's usually from the 92 to 80 range, where you, you come up with 40 cents per square yard. The surface treatment category, so that would be your hot-in-place, your thin overlays, that gets to $8 per square yard. And the further you go down the, the curve, the more it's gonna cost. So the mill and overlay is $16, reclamation $24. Those are all, that's all the information that we went through with Chris to kind of calibrate the system to what the town has paid in the past for maintenance. So now we get into the existing conditions in the town. So, this bar graph here kind of shows where the roadways fall into the each category. So on the left-hand side is how many miles of roadway fall into each category. And in the bottom you have all those categories, your reconstruction, reclamation, mill and overlay, surface treatment, crack seal, and defer maintenance. So you can see, you have a lot in that mill and overlay category, and then it kind of branches down from there. So the idea moving forward and building the capital plan is to get some of those roadways that are on the bottom of the curve, get them up, but also keep those roadways that are on the top of the curve up by doing the preventative maintenance. Um, the overall road surface rating for the town came out to 67. So what do these roadways look like that are in, in each of these bands? Uh, so the left side, that's River Street, uh, road surface rating of 15. So you can see the alligator cracking on the edge, uh, the roadway's in pretty poor shape. It's been deteriorated over time. And as you go up the curve, RSR 47, uh, Railway Hill Road, you can see that the, the cracking is less severe. It's not as pronounced all over the roadway. It's kind of staying to the sides. Uh, Holly Tree Lane, road surface rating 64, still on the, the bottom side of that curve. You have some severe cracking, but not as pronounced all over the, the roadway. Uh, Forest Street is a road surface rating of 80. Uh, you have basically just linear cracking and some minor surface deterioration to go along with it. Uh, Mitchell Street, which is an 85, you have some minor cracking in that area. And really, overall, the, the rating of the roadways is in pretty good shape. And then Clara Street, which doesn't really show too much signs of wear and tear. So let's put that into dollars now. How much is it gonna cost if you were to go out and try to repair all the roadways in the town today? You're looking at about $26 million of backlog. And you might think that that's a enormous number, but most towns wouldn't go out and bond that today to go repair all their roadways at once. Um, and because of the amount of miles in the, in the town, that's actually, it's about average. So, 26 million, where does that come from? So you can see your crack seal category has 31, uh, miles of roadway. And it comes out to $166,000. So, you get up into that next category where it's 27.43 miles, and you're already up at almost $3 million. So you can see how quickly that will add up as you go up that, uh, curve. And it, how important it is to do those preventative maintenance, uh, treatments in order to keep those roadways in those lower categories. Uh, the CIP development. So, uh, the next step in the process is to develop a CIP over the next, uh, capital improvement plan over the next five years. So, uh, to do so, we're gonna look at the budgetary requirements in the town. We're gonna, we've already looked at the unit costs with Chris to make sure that they're calibrated to what the town pays for their improvements. We're gonna look at prioritization strategies. We're gonna look at utility work that's going on as well. Make sure that you're not gonna go repair a roadway, or you're gonna do the best you can to go, not go repair a roadway and then have the utility company come in and cut it up afterwards. Uh, and then we're gonna look at the deterioration rates, so how close are they to getting into that next band? Uh, so this is a forecast model for the next five years in the town, uh, based on different funding scenarios. So you can see right now that blue line is the Chapter 90 allotment right now that the town gets. So you can see that if the town only uses that amount of money, it's gonna gradually lose rating over time. Uh, and just to keep in mind as well that this, uh, this project looked at the roadways from curb to curb, so this doesn't include sidewalk improvements, ramp improvements, uh, any, basically anything inside the curb that was pavement is categorized into this project. Any questions before I keep going?
One question.
Sure.
But don't, on our Chapter 90 funding, don't we have to allocate a certain amount to sidewalk repairs? Or sidewalk reconstructions or constructions?
No, there's no requirement.
No?
Nope.
We were never doing that? I thought, I thought for some reason it got in my mind that they were doing that at one point. No, okay, sorry.
For the most part, if we do a, a road with sidewalk on it, we take a look at that sidewalk. If it needs to be done, we'll do the repairs, or we'll try and do those.
So Chapter 90 money is just, just for the roads, not for the sidewalks?
You can...
I mean, you can do the sidewalks with it.
Yeah.
But...
You, you can do the sidewalks, and if they're in real bad shape, then we definitely would, but I'd rather take that money towards the roads if we can.
Okay, thank you.
So this is a view at the, uh, cost benefit value report. So basically what, what I did here was, we just took the top 10 rated roadways and just put them up on the screen, just so you can see them. Uh, the rest of them are in the report as well. So this is the program's way of telling us which roadways the town should focus on first. It's a data-driven analysis of the roadways. It's not, by no means is it set in stone, or is it gospel, but it, it's a good tool to use to look at the candidates that you wanna look, that you wanna repair first in the town. Uh, so Maple Avenue is on that first with a, uh, road surface rating of 26. Um, and it's calling for reclamation. And you have South Main Street, Center Street, Vaughn Street, Anderson Avenue, and so on. Um, so this is a good tool that we're gonna use with Chris and his staff and utilize to come up with that capital improvement plan moving forward. Uh, as part of the project, we also did a...
Question?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Just so I, just to, reclamation, we're talking about rebuilding the whole road completely?
Yeah, you...
Correct?
Reclamation is what we just did on Fuller Street, where we actually removed, actually Old Center up here also, uh, where we removed the existing pavement. We go down about a foot into the gravel, we mix it all up, put a good base down, and then we start over with our pavement. For instance, Old Center, and, actually both Old Center and Fuller Street received a 3-inch binder this year. Those will sit for a year, they'll settle out, and then we'll put an inch and a half of top on and mix them up.
Okay, surface treatment?
Surface treatment is chip seal. Uh, it is a micro-surface, it is, it's crack seal. Uh, early in the spring, we used the, uh, the W triple RP money. We did about $130,000 worth of crack sealing in town.
Mill and overlay is where they grind off the top, just the, just the...
Yep.
Like they do on, uh, the highways?
Like they do on the highways, what we just did to Wood Street, that's a mill and overlay.
Okay. What's that hot, uh, there was a...
Hot-in-place?
Hot-in-place, what is...
Hot-in-place is a very interesting, uh, repair technique, where they have a train of trucks, there's three tractor trailer trucks. They have these burners, the first two trucks are, I think it's three now. First three trucks have these burners on, propane burners. They heat the asphalt surface up. And then the last truck has tines on it, mixes that road up, and then, uh, has a screed at the back, and it just kind of makes a new pavement surface behind it. We used it out on Burner Street last year, and, uh, you, you really have to be careful of what you, where you use that. You gotta have, uh, a decent pavement surface to do that on. If, if your asphalt's too far gone, um, you know, you could end up going backwards.
Do they add anything to that when they're doing it?
Yes.
Okay, so they're adding a little bit, but not, not like...
They, they add liquid asphalt to, to the, to, as they, as they, uh, mix it up. So it, it, it comes out pretty good. It's, it's just hard to work with, um, with your, with your elevations out there. You know, especially a lot of the roads around here, they're narrow. That's a 13-foot wide machine. Um, most of our roads are 24, so you end up with a, with an overlay, or overlap in this, in the center line. And if you're not careful, it could throw your crown off. Um, so it's just one of those things you gotta look at.
Right, so that's, those are the base we'd be talking about. Uh, that's the type of construction we'd be talking about.
Correct.
Not necessarily chip seal.
No chip seal.
No chip.
The only time, uh, I would use chip seal if it was part of a, a treatment they call cape seal, where they come in, they do a crack sealing, then they throw this chip, that chip seal, uh, process down, which is the stone dust and liquid asphalt. Then over the top of that, they put a micro, so it, it covers up all that rough surface, shall we say. I haven't done that personally, but I know a lot of towns have used that and had very good luck with it. It's a real cheap alternative to, uh, you know, doing an overlay.
So it's basically, it's just, uh, it's, 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 it's buying you some time.
Buys you some time.
Basically.
Yep.
So if your chip sealing, if your, if your, your crack sealing is done right, you go in there and then you put the, put some chip seal on top of it, it kind of prevents the water from getting in.
Absolutely.
Which is all you want, really wanna do. You wanna prevent the water from getting underneath.
Yeah, and, and you get to look at the road and make sure that you, you have a good surface there. Uh, you know, where, where you have a crown. If you don't have a crown, then it's really tough with, with some surface treatments, you know, because that's what gets the water off the road.
Right, yeah, okay. All right, thank you, sorry, go ahead, go ahead, thank you.
All right, but why don't we, rather than go right on to signs, why don't we stay on, stay on the pavement management plan? If you, you know, have any other questions or, you know, discussion, then we can get on to signs.
These are the... Well, the, the top 10 roads... That didn't, there was another chart that we were seeing in here, I saw several charts. I'm surprised that some of the roads aren't on this, that were rated very poor. Why would they not, would that be... Who are we gonna throw the rock at them for?
No, the, the reason, um, the, the method that you'd be talking about is a worst-to-first approach. Um, this takes into account, um, the functional classification of the roadway, the road surface rating, the treatment it's calling for, the cost of that treatment it's calling for, um, and the life years added to the roadway. And it takes that all into account, and basically, it, it comes up with a rating system. Um, so where a roadway that may be a zero or a five, you might be adding 20 years to it. And it's a local roadway, you might not get as much bang for your buck as doing a surface treatment on a collector roadway, for instance. So that's what that, that's, that's why we come up with this report, is it's a good way to analyze, uh, take into, you know, not just the rating, but a lot of things into account.
So a lot of, you, you're looking at volume of, of use on the road too?
That, that, that's one of the factors in it, yep.
Maybe major factor. Not, not major, but one of the higher rated factors would be the volume of traffic.
Typically, when we see this, uh, cost benefit value report, we see the collectors and the arterials towards the top, because they get the most use. So that's a, that's one of the categories that it takes into account.
Okay.
And, uh, just to add on to your surface treatment question, um, the, the, the key to all those surface treatments, and there's many different kinds, is to get the right candidate to go with the right treatment.
Right.
Um, so what this program now will do for Chris and his staff is give him a baseline as to what roadway should fall into those categories, which will help him plan out for the future, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Just, I'd just like to explain this chart a little bit. You see the, the blue line where we're at now? That's, you know, the 8.874 million. If we, in the future, get that other $100 million to the Chapter 90, that's been floated out there by legislature and governor or whatnot. Now that brings us up a little bit closer to the, to the 1.1. You know, so that window to be at 1.5 is a lot smaller than what it is. You know, so that's a little bit of good news, I think.
Any more, uh, questions on the pavement before we move on? The signs is pretty brief, so. Okay?
We need $26 million to do all of our roads, basically.
If you wanted to do them tomorrow? Yes.
But, you know, that would, that would bring basically all your roads up to, you'd be at 100.
They'd be theoretically, theoretically, they'd all be at 100.
Yeah.
I mean, so that's not really...
What we really need is, we need $400,000 each year to bring this up to the white line so that the roads don't get any worse.
Right.
Right, and, and I, I think it's pretty, a pretty good bet that, once we have a new governor, we're gonna have a $300 million Chapter 90 program, and we'll be at about $1.1 million. So, if, if not a little higher.
We get about, sorry, we get about $400,000 per million that the state gives up.
Right, so, so we'll be at a 1.2, so we'll be close to maintaining our current, you know, state of roads. And it wouldn't take a lot... And it wouldn't take a lot more money to get us on an upward trend, which over time will get us, you know, pointing to a hundred, maybe never getting, getting to a hundred, but at least pointing to a hundred. At least improving the, the number, not, not, you know, improving the condition of our roads over time, rather than adding them to the grid.
Well, we have thirty miles roughly of crack seal, if we do crack seal every year.
Which we do, yep.
You do, you've got thirty miles to do. If you got that done in one year, can you do thirty miles in one year?
No, I don't think so.
No? I mean, time, it takes a long time to do one mile of road, right? And, and depending on the, the type of road, too.
Yeah.
Type of situation, right. Then you're talking surface treatments, so that, that, if you got, that, that's like half your roads right there.
Yep.
So we need, so the reconstruction at the, if, if, I'm trying to think of a way to do a bond. Naturally, I'd love to have every road at a hundred, and then we could get speed traps on every road that's good, because they'd be speeding down them, and then we could make all kinds of money on this. But I, I think realistically, even at a million and a half, if we were to get a million and a half from the state, we still, we, we, we're years out. We're, we're, we're basically just switching deck chairs on the Titanic. Because your, your reclamation roads are going to, are going to start turning from that orange into red, because they're going to deteriorate faster. The reconstruction roads aren't going to get any cheaper to do, so we really need to do a, some type, somehow, do a bond to knock off quite a bit of those bad pieces, while your Chapter 90 money can take care of maintaining stuff to get it.
Yes.
To keep it from getting down there.
Exactly, yep. And, you know, a lot of those roads that fall into the reconstructive, reconstruction, or the reclamation categories, you know, they're out in the country. You know, France Street, Beach Street, Pine Street, you know, you, you go out there, and those roads are, they're really dangerous in some areas, you know, but the costs are, are the highest to repair.
Right, but, you know, anybody who drives it, they have the right to drive on a good road, just like the guy going down South Main Street does.
Correct.
You know? And that's the tough, that's the tough thing we face naturally.
Yep.
But we've talked about a, a certain street in town that's a significant amount of money to repair it. And once it does get fixed up, then the complaint's going to be, they're speeding down my street. So the other half of the people will come in for that.
Yeah.
But, but it's, it's getting these bad roads, because, I mean, we could have, our public safety officials could get in, you know, get in an accident, because they hit a pothole when they're going someplace, you know? So your rescuers could need to be rescued, because they're getting into the bad, bad roadway. So.
Absolutely.
Even though it is in the boonies, we've still got to fix it.
Oh, absolutely, I, I agree a hundred percent. And, you know, those are, those roads are, they might be dangerous this time of year, but in the winter, they're even worse.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're hardest to plow, because the pavement surface is all over.
Well, one of your plows tipped over on one of those roads, didn't they? Didn't he, uh, didn't he hit a? It was before your time, but, but nonetheless, you know, you get a bad piece of road, and next thing you know.
Doesn't take much.
You're right. And so we, we really have to look at somehow bonding, and, and one of the things I was thinking about was trying to get the state to allow us to bond money, and using a portion of Chapter 90 money to pay for the bond.
Yeah, and the conversation I've had with state aid, they don't allow that.
Oh, of course they won't, even though they do it themselves, and the federal government doesn't, to get the highway money, but.
Yep.
But that's what we need, we really need, we need a big, big influx of money.
Yes, we do, to get, to get that curve up, and, although we can just spend, like you said, spend the Chapter 90 money to maintain what we have.
Right.
But we've got to get up over that bump.
But if you, I have a question now, if you have all this money, it just fell into our lap, can you fix them that quickly? Can you spend it in a year?
Well, there's a lot of other towns trying to do the same amount of work. You know, we, we are part of the, the search such contract, we had our reclaimers, our coal planners, our payers in for about three weeks. We did seven different roads. It's a lot of work.
Right.
It disrupts quite a bit of stuff in town. You know, we could spread that out and do a little bit here, do a little bit here, but I try to work around school. In a case like that, we would just have to throw that out the window, and we'd have to be working in the spring and the fall, and just spread out the work, so we're not, you know, trying to get everything done through.
Right, so scheduling it is something to come, to take into consideration as well.
Absolutely. But, you know, if, if a contractor sees you have that much work or that much money, you know, they're willing to work.
Madam Chair, this might be a little outside the scope of, of this, but are there any plans for bike lanes or anything when you're completely redoing roads on any of the roads?
Um, if we were to redesign a road, shall we say, going through Mass DOT record, their design process, we would be required to stripe for bike lanes.
But not, there are no plans for it when you're just.
The roads just aren't wide enough to, to handle that.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, any other comments, questions?
All right, so, how do we get to a capital plan, then? How do we come up with a five-year plan? Is that something that's part of this project?
It is.
Oh, okay, good.
Yep, it's part of this project, Conrad, myself, and probably involve at least David Lenton on the, on the, because he's got a lot of history. And we're going to sit down and hash it out, figure out the best way to do it, mix a little bit of both your seat, the cost benefit value, and also the RSR, the worst-to-first, and, you know, hit a lot of those maintenance streets, but then we've got to pick off one or two streets that, to make a big impact in town, you know, so. And then we'll, we'll present that to, to this board and make sure you guys are okay with it.
We're going to talk about signage?
Signage, signage, yeah. So the federal government has, has told all towns nationwide that we have to upgrade our signage. That is, your stop signs, they're concentrating on your, your regulatory signs, which are yield stops, no parking signs, stuff like that, and also your warning signs, which might be.
The curbs?
No, yeah, no, curbs, signs, the, the dangerous curve signs, T-intersection signs. Really, it's, it's size and it's reflectivity, and Conrad, you're right.
Yeah. So the, the whole reason people are doing the sign inventories now is because there's, there was a federal requirement in place for June thirteenth of this year, that every town needs to have some sort of a maintenance plan in place with, along with an inventory of all their signs in town. And that's what Chris was just saying, based on the retroreflectivity. So it's basically going out, inventorying where all your signs, and knowing where they are, what condition they're in, and how reflective are they, do they meet the requirements? So the inspectors went out, they looked at every sign, inventory attributes that they collected was the sign types, the M E T C D coding, sign size, sign material, sign condition, and then we also looked at the posts as well to make sure that they were in compliance. And then for some of the signs, a percentage of the signs, we shot the retroreflectivity. Now, when I get to the next page, you'll understand why. So in town, there were fourteen fifty-four signs, one thousand four hundred fifty-four signs. Out of those signs, two hundred ninety-four of them were stop signs, one hundred seventy-eight speed limit signs, and one hundred children's signs. Again, Chris, as Chris said, they're really focusing on the regulatory and warning signs, and making sure that those are up to code. And this is a slide that I meant to get to about why we only shot a certain number of them.
Engineering grade, so you guys know that's this small little guy here, you'll see probably seventy-five percent of the road in town have these on there. And these are the high prismatic, which you guys, these are what we're placing with now.
So out of the one thousand four hundred ninety-four signs in town, one thousand seventeen of them are that engineering grade. Probably ninety-nine percent of the engineering grade won't pass retroreflectivity. So the idea of putting a cap, capital plan together for signs is to replace your stop signs first, make sure those are up, up to compliance, and then go from there.
I have a question, what about the color? Remember, we said that cranberry can't be used, or red can't be used, I just thought I'd ask. Because now you have one that's red, that's supposedly.
Yeah, we can bring that up now. Yes, the federal government does not want us using red signs. What this affects, I'm not quite sure, I don't think they're going to come down from jail, I'm not sure, but.
Goodbye.
Yeah. So red, we're using it, and that's up to you guys, if you, if you want to keep using it, we'll keep using it. I, I think the only thing it might affect is any.
I just stayed with my.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the only thing it might affect is any kind of, if we, if there's any money available, shall we say, in the future. They, they want to see that we're using the current standards. The, the colors that are allowed are blue, which you see in some towns next to us. Same thing with green, which the majority of towns use. That, and my recommendation, if we were going to, so it should be go to white. With, with, this is the cheapest for us to make, and that's why. And the reason it's the cheapest is because we're not worried about the lettering being reflective, just the background is.
And white is acceptable?
White is acceptable.
Okay.
White is acceptable, yeah.
For now.
For now, right, so, okay, we haven't ordered them yet, so.
We have not changed anything, we're still red. The other thing that I'm doing is, as we do a road, as, through the state funds, we replace every sign on that road. So everything's getting upgraded to, to the new standards as we go. The only thing that's not compliant is the red signs.
Mr. Chair. Question, Chris, how long do the prismatic ones last?
The, we've had an issue with some of the red ones fading out. You'll, you'll see around town, some of the red ones, if they're facing the sun most of the day, the red actually fades out. That's just the, the different type of material, for some reason, that's fading. So I guess it all depends on placement, where it's at.
Really depends on whether anybody steals them.
Yeah, if they, you know, if it's someone's name, it might last a week.
And this is a federal government requirement.
Yes.
If we're not in compliance, then what is, what's the penalty? Is it just that we're not available for increases in federal monies, or?
Be honest with you, I don't know. I don't know of anybody that's.
Have you heard of anybody that's? No, and for the street name signs, I haven't heard of anything. There used to be, as part of that federal requirement, there was dates in place for replacement of retroreflectivity, you know, non-compliant signs, but since then, they have removed those dates, because there was no funding to back up the replacements. So now, a, as long as you have an inventory in place and some sort of plan for replacement, you're in compliance. So that was, that was the idea of doing this project, along with the pavement management, was to make sure that the town was in compliance for that, and going forward, just to maintain that program moving forward.
Right, so as our, as our signs wear out, we replace them with the new ones. We don't have to go out and redo everything all at once.
Right, well, the idea between, behind developing the capital plan would be to replace the most important signs first, which is your stop signs, your yield signs. Make sure that the roads are safe, make sure people can see them at night, and then move down the, the inventory from there.
Okay.
Are you?
Go ahead.
Are you replacing the posts, too?
We only replace the posts if they don't meet current standards, which is for breakaway. If we find, if you see the round poles out there, those aren't breakaways, so we do replace those.
Are they, is there a reflex, reflexivity, is that what it? Re, re, yeah, is what, is there any of that for the posts?
No.
Any requirement for the posts?
No, there's a height requirement, and they have to be able to be breakaway.
What is this, what does a stop sign just cost?
Uh, depending on what size, we go to thirty-inch, probably like fifty dollars. If the post doesn't get hit, it's fifty dollars, if the post get hit, gets hit, it's seventy-five to eighty, plus the time to go out and replace it.
And we have thousand-odd stop signs, or?
Seventy-three, three hundred or so.
Oh, three hundred.
It was two hundred ninety-four.
So you're replacing the street signs with the red to match everything else? Is that why?
Yeah, well, yeah, and that was, it's a little confusing. We're, we're putting up red signs with the town seal on them, they meet the current standards, other than the color, the size, you can see the size.
Yep.
Harrison, excuse me, and that's what we're going to go forward with, unless you, the, the board wants to do different.
I like red, but, do you have a comment?
I like red, too, but, but the, is there any grant money available to do any kind of sign changes? Or is it just expected you're taking it out of Chapter 90 money to do this?
Yeah, and Chapter Ninety's never asked me what color signs I've been putting up. I would say most of the people that work for the state have driven through Middleborough, and they know we have red signs, but no one's ever brought it up, so.
I like red, but we get more bang for our buck going with the white.
White, yeah, that's.
Now, Chris, you and I talked about the signs the other day, I was chatting with, with you, and I asked you to talk to police and fire, because police cars now with these strobe, bright, very bright, blue and red strobe lights, white strobe lights even, would there be any impact for the visibility of the signs when they're responding, or the fire apparatus, or, or even yard trucks with the, with the yellow lights and so forth?
I don't believe so, I haven't checked with them, and the only reason I say it probably won't, because this is the same material as speed limits.
What's the difference in price from the white to the red? Do you have any idea?
I don't offhand, but maybe ten, ten dollars on, and we're still going to buy, still going to pay for the, the town seal, but we're only buying, you know, really, it, it has a lot to do with the fact that they're not going to fade, the white will not fade.
So they don't have to be replaced as often?
Yeah, they might get stolen just as easily, but, you know, they're not going to fade.
Can't prevent that.
Right.
I just don't see why we, you know, if we're looking at, we're spending the town's money, and the whites are cheaper, and they don't wear out.
And they're in compliance.
Yeah.
In case money becomes available.
I don't see why we should be anything but go with white. That sounded real good.
Were you asking us about that today?
Again, I don't think it's a decision that has to be made tonight.
Okay.
You know, if, if we're told to, to switch, if we were demanded to switch, then, you know, that's, I'll come back to you guys, say, if we get to switch, should we go to white? For now, let's keep it at red. And for the majority of the signs that we're putting up, they're either through accidents, or they're through the Chapter 90 program. If one gets stolen, then we, we try to make it in-house, and it's a little bit cheaper, because we, we have the materials. The other, the other thing that's, that you'll notice is the letters are uppercase and lowercase. That's a new, new thing that we're in the process of switching to. We, we're doing all uppercase letters, this is what we've been doing, but they're supposed to be upper and lowercase.
Okay. So that's not in compliance besides the color, then?
Yeah, this is an older sign.
Yeah, okay, yep, yep.
I don't know why.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we done with signs? Can we move on?
That's. Yep.
Oh, we have a question from the audience.
I'm sorry, Glenn Montapert, the price difference for the Middleborough decal on it, is there a large, you have to have the decal on it? And what is the price with and without the decal? Because as a New York City boy, that decal looks really attractive, and I want one in my house. So I think the theft rate would be a little higher with the decal.
Well, we know where to go to find our signs now, don't we?
I've got a stack, no, but that would be my only thought.
Okay.
I want to say it's between six and eight dollars, but I don't know about that for sure.
Yeah.
For sure. But, uh.
I think it's charming.
It's charming, too, as long as one wants one.
Okay, so now we're done with signs, we can move on, I think.
We're not done with signs.
Well done, that's a very nice report.
Charlie.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, to you, Charlie, can you check with SherpaD and see if there's anything in the wind about signage and, because if we are going to switch, I mean, look at the. You remember when Mass Highway put those road signs down here for me, Flower? I mean, we had calls on it, it was like, who put those signs up? We blame you, because why not? You weren't here to defend yourself, but, but I mean. We blame you, because why not, you weren't here to defend yourself, but, but I mean, maybe if, if making a change works, and, you know, we filter some of this in, I don't know, maybe it'll help us down the road with, with something coming through Mass Highway, I don't know, probably not, but can you check anyway?
Yeah, I mean, I think Chris has already checked, but we can check again.
Gentlemen, thank you.
Any other questions, no?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't see the check in here, you were gonna leave us for doing some of this work.
I thought that was your, your spare change, Steve.
Also, on another note, Route twenty-eight is going to start construction on September third.
Yep.
I noticed, I put that...
Thank you.
And that's gonna be from the Rotary, or from, from the Bridgewater line, or from the Rotary?
Starting at the Rochester Town Line, their plan is to get to Wood Street before winter.
Before winter?
Yeah, this fall.
Good, well, that's probably the worst part of the road is down that end, that's good, good, excellent, thank you.
All right, so, we're moving on, Robert Weaver DBA Sports Limited Auto Sales asked to have this continued to September fifteenth, so I would like to ask for a vote, a motion for that, please?
So moved.
And a second? Okay, nobody wants to move it?
Well...
Yeah, can we, why?
Second to the question.
Why?
Charlie, why did they ask, they couldn't make it tonight?
He wanted to bring his attorney, and his attorney was not available.
Because this is the same gentleman who has ignored us for a number of times.
Yes.
I am not happy with moving it.
Okay, well, what, then, we could have a discussion, he, are we allowed to do that without him being represented here?
I think we, I don't think any of us are happy with the man, but, you know, it was a legitimate request, and we, I think we had to honor it, so...
Did anybody else come here?
We did, Selectman Stewart and I did visit him last week, we, you know, he was proposing perhaps that he could increase his limit, I think it's pretty clear that he doesn't have space to increase his limit, he may even have some wetlands issues, and the Concom will be discussing that at their next meeting, I think on the fourth of September. By pushing it off, it allows us to, you know, maybe consider whatever the Concom discusses that night as well, and, you know, I think you do, you know, have the authority, you know, to enforce the limit that he has, and he's violated that limit on a number of occasions, so I think that's something that you should just, you know, keep in mind, but, um...
I'll second the motion to continue, with the understanding that I don't think it improves the mood of the board.
No, not at all, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so we'll move that to nine fifteen at eight thirty PM. Okay, now we have town managers' report.
Madam Chairman, I included an email from the new Mass DOT project manager from the Rotary, where he talks about where the project is, and what they'll be doing, and they are primarily right now trying to come to an agreement with the designer on a, a price for the, you know, design, up to twenty-five percent with, with all the permitting that needs to be done. And there was a meeting that took place in, in June, it wasn't a task force advisory committee meeting, it was really just the DOT staff and our staff, I was in here with Joffrey and Barry McNorton, our consultant, who was the one who came up with the Middleboro alternative, were there. And, you know, the response, or the report I got from that meeting was, it was very positive, they liked where the DOT was going with the design, they were further improving it, and, and this is really the current state of the design, you know, still very preliminary, but you'll see that they, their, the Rotary is evolving into more of an oval, in order to accommodate all the various movements, and you can also see, I think, a number of attempts around the Rotary to peel traffic off and out of the Rotary, even, you know, beyond the flyover, you can see a couple of cut-through, or cut-around lanes onto eighteen and off of eighteen, to further take traffic out of the Rotary to make it function better, to bring it down to a capacity that it can handle. So, so, you know, I think that's all good news, I think the fact that they're, you know, going to, you know, bring this designer onboard, proceed to, to do all the environmental permitting, and in my conversation with him last week, you know, his hope, if everything goes well, and the next major step is that they need to get the concurrence of DEP, that this is a limited project, which means it doesn't require a full environmental review, you know, they, they think they can get this work done in about a year, which then, I think keeps us on track to, to getting something started in two thousand seventeen.
Good. Wonders never cease, okay, great.
And then, let's see, let me just, a couple other things in the report, I was right...
The Sherped item?
Yeah, the second item, something we discussed here, was getting some traffic counts done at the Hannover Plaza, written to the property owner, and hopefully they will come back with an answer relatively soon. And, and quite surprisingly, believe it or not, the Tracy River Street matter is improving as we speak, there was a site visit out there, Bob Whalen went out there, and I think I reported to you a couple weeks ago that things were largely off the road, there's still a lot of things on their property, a lot of those things on their property are now gone, they really are appearing to make a sustained effort to bring that property into compliance, and there'll be another site visit coming up in about a month, but I think we are all pleasantly surprised that this is, seems to be resolving itself, so, that's all I have tonight.
Charlie, to, the Sherped letter, from, a letter actually from David Steinberg, real estate managing leasing...
Yeah, that's, that's my letter to him, talking, referencing that, we have, we, Sherped is willing to do the counts, but we need their permission as the property.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They needed to send a letter, not us.
No, no, I've sent the letter, on the, you know, on behalf of our interest in getting Sherped to do it, and now we're waiting to hear from the property owner whether they will allow us that permission.
Okay, very good, thank you.
All right, next we have correspondence, Mr. Knowlton, we'll start with you.
Sure. I just have one, number eight, and it's more of a question. This is a comment from a person who owns a package store, and the governor has signed into law permitting alcohol sales on Sunday mornings to start at ten AM. My question is to Charlie, as part of this, it says, keep in mind your local licensing authority, which is this board, has the final say about setting the hours of operation. Does that mean that we, we can override what the governor has passed into law?
Yeah, it's, it's a local option, similar to, I think, restaurant sales a few years ago, where cities and towns were given the option to extend them earlier on a, on a Sunday, and I think there were other hours changes, which, you know, actually, that particular one, there was a great deal of interest from the restaurants to do it, and you did it. Actually, until last week, I was unaware that this was even in the, you know, in the works, so this, this was kind of news to me, but, you know, maybe you see what your local package stores think about it, you know, before you take any kind of action, obviously you've heard from one.
Right. I just, I don't want to see, you know, putting any constraints on any business, that, you know, if it's permitted by the state, I don't see why we would put a constraint on it, an individual can still choose not to open if they don't want to, right?
I guess, yeah, I guess they could.
Yeah, they don't have to open.
Yeah, it's new to me too, so, I know in the restaurants, it's, it was optional, and had to go to town meeting first, before the board could make, have the authority.
Right, right.
And then you've done it case by case, if someone wants to do it, they ask you to approve it, not everyone has done it in the restaurants, I don't think, but...
So, I guess it would be safe to say that this board is looking for feedback on this issue from other owners of package stores.
Mr. Givernani.
Madam Chair, as the renewals come up in November for all these, wouldn't it be easy just to put a question in each one of those renewals before they return them, whether you would like to, or whether you don't want it, or something, that way you'd know from every package store if they responded, I don't know if that's something that we can do, or we would want to do. Swoop a thought?
We can, but I believe it said it's effective in October, so I, and then I don't know, I don't know what's required as far as a meeting, so, I think we just need to look into it a little bit more, now that you brought it to our attention.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, let's do it.
Middleboro Gas and Electric has a position open, first-class lineman, qualifications, experience in climate utility pools, five years' experience in electric utility construction, some other things, are these available on the GNE website? Okay, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but, so I guess contact the gas and electric department if you have any interest in that.
Okay, Mr. McKinnon?
Hey. Let's see, we are waiting information back on the Rockland Industries item number three, conservation agent send a letter to DEP to see where we stand with them, and see where the new management plan, I guess, stands. There's also... The solicitation of candidates for a mosquito district commissioner?
You looking for another job, Steve?
No. I get stung enough, thank you, but, is this, does this, is this, one of the elected officials have to become this?
I don't think so, I think this could be anybody, so, maybe you just put it out there to the community, anybody wants to be nominated.
Yeah, give us...
Write a, write a letter to the board.
Send us, send a letter to the board of selectmen if you're interested in being a candidate for the mosquito district commissions, commissioners. I'll be, I'll be going to the Plymouth County Commissioners Meeting on the twenty-fifth of September, and I'll bring back any information we get from there. Number five, this drainage mitigation going on up at Oak Point, is this gonna ever come to an end? I mean, it seems like this thing's been going round in circles forever, can, is it possible to get, you know...
Yeah, no, I, they're, I think they're trying to all bring it to an end, so I think it's in everybody's interest to get this resolved and move forward, I know Point has further development they want to do, and, you know, so...
We have a lot of things that we want to do in our town, and it seems like we need money to do that, and we can't quite continue on the prop two and a half increase we get on our existing tax base, we have to increase our tax base. So, I think we have to get people to move forward, or decide this is what we're gonna do, we're gonna be right where we are right now for the next four hundred and fifty years, and that's that, or we're gonna move forward. But in order to move forward, we need to bring money in, and in order to bring money in, we have to increase our tax base. So, we're gonna stop nitpicking and start acting like a real business, I think.
Not to mention the permit money that will come in.
Well, and the folks will get into our town. And the Board of Assessors had a meeting, and in their minutes, it's probably nothing, but they, in their minutes, they were, they went into executive session for something that's not stated as one of the reasons to go into executive session. So, it's probably just a matter of rewording why they went into executive session, but I think people have to be more cognizant, they just can't go into executive session for, and I think they put in here to discuss tax, the tax base or something, and that's not one of the reasons to go to executive session, so...
Yeah, I'm not sure on that, Steve, I'll, I'll check in.
Take a look at that.
Yeah, to discuss exemptions and the board's authority to abate taxes, you know, I've seen that before, I don't, I don't know where it falls under, but I think it does fall under, maybe, it's, if it's, you're right, if it's, if it's available, then it needs to be stated in a different way, probably.
It's gotta be stated right.
Yeah, I get you, okay.
If it falls into the, it can fall into a category, it can fall into a general category, but it's gotta be stated correctly, or else there'll be, somebody could come out of the woodwork and say, you know, you're in violation.
Yeah, I'll talk to them about that.
That's all, just, just form, you know, following the proper form.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, that's all for me, thank you.
Everybody's covered everything I had, so I would ask for a motion to go into executive session, not returning to open session, correct? I, the chair, declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, that's the reason we're going into executive session.
Yeah, we're going in for, excuse me, discuss the purchase of real estate.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going in to discuss the purchase of real estate.
So moved.
Second.
It's gonna be a poll vote?
Poll vote, Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.